All right, good evening everybody and welcome to the Monday, June 11th meeting of the Tuckahoe Village Board of Trustees. Will everyone please rise and join me in the pledge of the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will our village clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Luisee.
Present.
Trustee Andino.
Present.
Trustee Lang.
Present.
Mayor Eklund.
I am very happy to be here tonight, thank you. I do not have any appointments to make this evening, so that's going to bring us right to our one and only presentation, which is by the Rotary Club of Eastchester. And Mary Chimara is going to talk with us, I guess? You can come right up to the microphone here, please, thank you. Did you bring the big check for us, is that it?
No, I have, I don't have the checkbook with me.
Okay, that's all right.
As soon as we get approval for this wonderful project where we've got it all ready to go.
Good.
For those of you that don't know what Eastchester Rotary is, I'd like to start with that so I can give you some confidence and background in what we do. Our thirty-one current members are part of a worldwide organization of 1.2 million people, worldwide.
Yeah, you know, pull the microphone just a little bit closer to you. That's good. Oh, much better, thank you, excellent.
And so that is part of Rotary International. Rotary International also has a foundation from which that we, as individual clubs, can ask for grants. So, part of the money is that we're going to be spending, some $4,000 is coming from that foundation back to our district. And they, that grant committee, you submit your grant, I could show you a copy of what I had to do. And by following their instructions, they give us matching funds. So, right now, we have $8,000. Obviously, I found out today, the park is growing in scope and how wonderful and beautiful it's going to be. So, in order to accomplish that, even at the very beginning, I knew our $8,000 was not going to be sufficient for the whole park, nor did I ever say to Frank that we're going to be able to fund the entire thing. But by partnering with Frank and the village, we think we can accomplish more. And then partnering with the Tuckahoe Beautification Committee, who I'm very fond of, with my sister-in-law being a number-one advocate of that, it's going to, I think we're going to find ways of getting donations for various items. So, we're going to have most of the out-of-pocket cost covered, not, of course, the wonderful labor and the skills of the other, some of the other people that'll be participating. I know our club doesn't formally say "Tuckahoe" because it was formed fifty-five years ago. And I think at that time, they were hoping that Tuckahoe might have enough people interested that they'd have their own club. But we think of ourselves as Eastchester-Tuckahoe, and we participate in our giving of our funds and participating in scholarships, donation backpacks to the children at West Cap. We give turkeys and chickens for Thanksgiving to West Cap. We're providing them insurance every year for their van, so you can, I think you get the feeling that we do support the village with our contributions, too. Where do we get our funds? We have to do all of our own fundraising, other than the grant that I suggested. And we have a golf outing once a year, this year, on August the 6th, and at Leewood Country Club, and that's where we get our funds for the year. We also provide $8,000 annually for scholarships for Eastchester, Tuckahoe, Eastchester and Tuckahoe schools, and also our Interact Club that are twenty-five members strong. That's a high school level of Rotary. And we teach them how to do fundraising, how to give back, how to be a service above yourself. We're also in the preliminary stages of starting a Rotary Act Club. That's a college-age club, and I, we're partnering with Concordia College to get that off the ground. You might be interested to know, too, these Rotary Act Clubs in the New York, in metropolitan New York, many of them work at the UN because they are international students, so they're working there on various projects, too. So, we're in a very popular place for Interact to work with us. So, I think in the past few years, I've had this dream of having a park named with the Eastchester name associated with either Tuckahoe, Crestwood, or Eastchester. And then my meeting with Frank DiMarco, when I met him, oh, what a visionary he is! And his parks are beautiful. And there's a little park every place you look, and visitors, I'm sure, come here, and they're all saying, "What a beautiful little villages here." Eastchester as well. So, when Frank showed me this sweet little place that he was calling Pocket Park, oh, I said, "That's got to be for me and my club." And so Frank came showing us renderings last year, and then we became very enthusiastic. Because I was president this year, I get the honor of naming and trying to get a grant. And so this was, is my pet project. So, I'm anxious to get it fully underway and, as you were asking, to spend our money that we have. And with Frank's help and the Beautification Committee, we, like I'm saying, we want to do fundraising over this, too. We're going to probably be selling, selling, I don't want to use, I'm such a mercantile that I keep on saying "selling" when I'm saying "get donations." So, just as you did at the library, where people bought the little papers and had their family names put in there, that we're, we're going to use that idea. I already have a couple of interested Rotarians that want to donate the benches. So, this is how, I'm hoping that we're going to get more funds, that we should be close to be able to do the reclamation there. Does anybody have any questions for me?
No, I think, actually, I'm just going to, because I think people at home don't realize that the park, I'll identify the location where we're talking about. And the Pocket Park is right next to the Bagaloft. So, it's right by the Crestwood Train Station. It's that little pocket, Pocket of Park, which is right at the bottom of Lincoln Avenue. So, it's a great little space, you know, we, when the developer was building the two buildings, or the building across the street, after they knocked down those gas stations, you know, we said, "That's really going to be a great little spot," because it's very visible when you're driving up Columbus, Dale Road, Columbus Avenue, and you're coming into Crestwood. I mean, boom, that's what you see right there. And, of course, you see it as you're coming down Lincoln Avenue, too. Or if you're getting off the train and you're coming into the village. So, it's really, you know, it's a, it's a small space, but it's a, I think it's a major crossroad, so. So, we're talking about, I know we have a local resident who's done some landscape design drawings for it, and you're talking about some benches that would be donated, a sort of a buy a brick program, which is wonderful. And I guess Frank is going to work with you on the Department of Public Works in, you know, doing, performing the labor on getting some of this work done, along with the contribution that the Rotary, as well as the Beautification, are going to contribute towards this. Sounds like it sums it up? What was the name? I know we had talked about...
Well, we're hoping that you're going to select Eastchester Rotary. Underneath that, from what I heard from a man designing the signage, would be Crestwood Park, or Eastchester-Crestwood Park, or something in that vein. The last I knew, he was thinking of a two-tiered sign, so it would fall under that.
Okay. So, we have some time still to work on those issues, and, but, yeah, we're excited. We're excited that the Rotarians in the Rotary are involved in this. So, I know the Lions Club do certain things in the community, and it's, it's nice to have the Rotary Club involved. They always are, and, but it's nice to get them a little bit of visibility in our community. I think it's nice.
Right, thank you.
Yes, good. Does anybody have any questions at all? Okay, well, thank you very much.
And thank you.
Yeah, appreciate it.
All right, there are, we don't have any public hearings tonight, so I'm going to move on to the adoption of minutes, and that's going to be the approval of minutes of the regular board meeting of May 7, 2018. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second?
Second. In favor?
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. And that's going to bring us to our first opportunity to come on up and address the board on anything that's on our agenda tonight, anything that's on the agenda. All right, so we'll move right into resolutions. We're going to talk about resolution number one, which is authorizing the use of Washington Street and Union Place for the Tuckahoe Housing Authority's annual Family Day on August 18th. The rain date is August 19th. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Luisee.
Favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number two, authorizing a donation in the amount of $3,000 to the Westchester Italian Cultural Center for the 10th Edition of the Italian Film Festival, cinema Soto Listella, Greg, did I get that right?
Sounds really good.
And street closures for set events on July 12th, 19th, and 26th. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Luisee.
Favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. This is a new one, authorizing, this is resolution number three, authorizing the use of Depot Square on July 21st for a summer fair to promote local businesses and merchants, and this is hosted by the Eastchester-Tuckahoe Chamber of Commerce. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And I am certain that if anybody wants to take a look at what they're actually going to be doing, they can go to the Chamber's website. Chamber has their office here, but this is something that they've talked about, they wanted to, we're going to give them permission to close off half of the square so they can set up some tables and promote local businesses, so.
Trustee Luisee.
In favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number four is authorizing the installation of a crosswalk on Rose Avenue in the vicinity of the entrance to the new field being constructed by Concordia College as per their planning board approval, subject to the installation requirements set forth by the Tuckahoe Police Department and applicable state laws. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Luisee.
Favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number five is authorizing the intent to participate in the Waste, Recycle, Shared Services Program for the development of a waste and recycling website and telephone app proposed by Sustainable Westchester, subject to a final review of the service agreement. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
And David, can you just tell us, I know we talked about this on Thursday, just tell us a little bit of...
This is actually a pretty interesting web app. I think most people are going to be, actually, be using it on their phone, but it's actually a pretty, it's called Recollect. White Plains, the City of Ry, Large Mountain of Maranac, Sanitation District are already using this, and they're seeing kind of the benefits from it. It's something where we can put on our recycling schedules, our sanitation schedules, they call something a recyclopedia, where anyone can kind of look up anything they'd like to, say, if they want to get rid of batteries, and go, "Where to get rid of batteries in Westchester County?" So, just kind of a catch-all. What else it will do is allow us to send notifications out, and we had a little bit of trouble this winter sending some notifications out. We think snow is going to happen, we're not going to collect recyclables and things like that. This will help us do a quick alert, it'll be right on the sanitation app, it'll come up, and things like that. We've talked to the town of Maranac, I've talked to the town administrator over there, and he's seen a significant reduction in phone calls in regards to this. In the future, it may help us do pickup collection or scheduling of collections if we want to kind of change, or, you know, look how we kind of collect things like metals and things like that. So, this is through Sustainable Westchester, so the pricing is a lot cheaper than what we would get if we went on our own. Already, some of the places I've already gone to it are looking to, looking to jump on the Sustainable Westchester app, because if it's county-wide, obviously, we're getting, you know, better pricing, so. It's going to be, it's, I think people want kind of this stuff on their phone, it's going to be right there, so I think it should be a good thing for the village. And at $1,700 a year, however, Frank has applied for several grants, so we think we can have the cost covered for the first couple of years, at least.
Oh, that's wonderful, that's excellent, thank you.
Trustee Luisee.
Favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number six is authorizing the mayor to execute an online auction contract with Auctions International, Inc., for the use of their online auctioning site for surplus municipal equipment. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And basically, what this is, is we sell a lot of our assets on eBay, and this is another opportunity for us to use an online auction vehicle for getting rid of, we might have some DPW assets that we're going to sell off, so eBay, sometimes we do wonderful and sometimes we really don't do so great. So, this is just going to be another available means for us to sell off some surplus equipment.
Trustee Luisee.
Favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. And resolution number seven is authorizing the setting of a public hearing for July 16, 2018, to consider a proposed local law creating a "Do Not Knock" registry. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
So, we will have a public hearing open on this next month.
Trustee Luisee.
In favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. And resolution number eight is authorizing the setting of a public hearing for July 16, to consider a proposed local law amending the zoning code of the Village of Tuckahoe to exclude living space in the basement from the floor area ratio, also known as FAR. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And unlike the easier one prior to this "Do Not Knock," which is self-explanatory, Gary, I'm just going to ask you if you can kind of touch on this. I know the public hearing isn't open until next month, but...
Sure, and I can go over it a little more then, too. So, what happens is, in single-family homes, if you have a finished basement, that counts towards your FAR. So, a lot of these single-family homes don't have a finished basement, and what this will allow them to do is finish their basement without having to get a variance, because usually, when you have a single-family house and you finish your basement, you're going to be over the FAR, so you'd have to go for a variance to the zoning board. So, this will allow people to finish their basements without having to go before the zoning board. It's not going to legalize any illegal basements, they still have to file for their permits and go through the building department, file all those things. So, that's basically it. It doesn't count towards two-family homes, it's just single-family homes, and it's making, it's making, it makes it easier for people to finish their basements without having to go through the zoning board. It just avoids that step.
From a standpoint of usable or allowable space, but they still need to pull a permit because they're doing electrical work, plumbing work, and things like that.
Exactly correct. I know this board had, which I can go over more in detail at the next meeting, had requested that the zoning board and planning board both look at this. And just as a brief synopsis, they were, they had no problem with this, but they were concerned that they, somebody could build a bigger house, you know, McMansion on a piece of property. But Mr. Williams, our building inspector, had given a PowerPoint presentation showing basically how that can't happen, because we have our setbacks, our height requirements, so it's, it really prevents people from building bigger houses, so. But the boards really didn't, yes.
Gary, so I can ask a question?
Of course.
What, if any, impact would this have on property value?
Well, if somebody's going to finish their basement, that means their, their home's going to be more valuable, which increases the property values. They're going to pull permits to finish it, so since their houses are going to be more valuable, their taxes are going to be increased a bit because their houses are more valuable.
I just want, but I, that's, I wanted that to be talked about.
Yeah. You can't put an apartment down there and have tenants down there because it's a single-family home only. So, it's really for people that want to, you know, put a rec room down there, or bathroom down there. Right now, because of this FAR, they're not able to do that, it's unfinished space, should be unfinished. So.
Thank you, Gary.
Trustee Luisee.
In favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. And here's another one, we're going to have a busy meeting next month. Resolution number nine is authorizing the setting of a public hearing for July 16, 2018, to consider a proposed local law authorizing the board to adopt a budget for the fiscal year commencing June 1, 2019, that requires a real property tax levy in excess of the amount otherwise prescribed in General Municipal Law, Section 3-C. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
So, I will explain this. What this is, is that we, we set a public hearing, and next month, we will vote on actually exceeding the tax cap for the budget that would be next year. And we do this every year. We had a discussion about this at our work session on Thursday, so why do we do this? Do we plan on going over the tax gap? Well, absolutely not, we do not. But we, we put this, it's really more of a safety measure, we put this in place because if we, if, if the board, when they were working on their budget, if there was something that came up that required them to exceed 2%, the only way you can actually exceed 2% is you have to pass a local law that allows you to do so. So, if we vote in favor of this next month, we would, in essence, be doing that. So, the course of action would be, we would go through the budget process, we would adopt the budget that comes in less than 2%, and then the, one of the first things we do, actually, I think before we adopt our budget, is we rescind this local law. But it's really in place for, there could be some catastrophic reason why you have to raise your taxes, maybe 3% or 4%. There could be, you know, some infrastructure problem that happens, you know, and, pardon me?
It's not always 2%.
And it's not, that's right, yes, and it might not be 2% next year, that's true. Yeah, it could be, we've had some years it was almost zero, so. Anyway, so that's the purpose of this, but it'll be a public hearing next month.
Trustee Luisee.
In favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number 10 is authorizing an agreement with the Community Fund of Bronxville, Eastchester, and Tuckahoe for a grant in the amount of $8,000 for the operation of the Tuckahoe Trolley. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And we want to thank them very much again for keeping that trolley rolling.
Trustee Luisee.
In favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number 11 is authorizing the mayor to enter into a cooperation agreement with the County of Westchester for the purposes of undertaking a community development program. So, I will make the motion, and I'm going to look for a second before we have a discussion on this. So, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. We talked about this at length, actually, at our meeting on Thursday. This is the, it's called the CDBG program, and the last time they had the cycle for the program, the program was stalled, in essence, because of the lawsuit that was lodged against the county for the county not providing enough, I'm just going to kind of paraphrase this, not providing enough affordable housing, fair and affordable housing, in Westchester County. So, the last time we had this process ongoing, we, we, the Village of Tuckahoe has always been successful in applying for and receiving CDBG money, and it's a grant program that I know I worked with, our former DPW commissioners for years, and we, we got some pretty sizable amounts of money, and that was primarily because we had areas of our community that the county had identified as low-mod areas, so we could apply for money for sewer relining was a really big thing, some sidewalk repaving. So, anyway, that was then, this is now, the new program that is in place. Unfortunately, it carries the same restrictive language for us to give up, or potentially give up control of our local zoning. And one of the things, we met on Thursday at our work session, and we wanted to find out from the program director, a couple of things. The first thing was, you know, what is the potential opportunity that we would have? We know the program is a lot smaller now, so what are the opportunities that the village would have in terms of real money that we could apply for, money that we may get that we would apply for? So, we had a conference call last week, I was on the call with our deputy mayor, David Burke was on it, Norman Drummond, she's the director of the program. So, a couple of things we found out is that the pool of money is very small, we don't have that low-mod area section that we used to, so some may say, "Well, that's, maybe that's a good thing." Maybe it is, maybe it isn't. We, the key thing, and I had struggled with this last go-around, was by us not signing into this cooperation agreement, we actually are handcuffing the Tuckahoe Housing Authority from making an application also. So, what was important was, we wanted to find out, were they making an application? And we found out for this cycle, and this is a three-year cycle, so in three years from now, this conversation will take place again, and they are not. So, it's for that reason that, since the Housing Authority isn't making an application, and we, in essence, aren't really going to get anything out of it, that's why I am definitely going to be voting not in favor of signing onto this agreement. So, that's, I hope I explained it, David, did I explain it pretty well? Okay, all right, it's very complicated. Anybody have anything to weigh in on?
That's good information, because I wasn't sure if, I didn't get that, the latter part of your information, that they're not going to be applying. So, that's good to know.
I think if we could just, and I think you touched on this, Mayor, is, does, does the benefit outweigh us, do us not participating in this hurt us? And I, and you touched on this, Mayor, as you, as you said, the money, we don't know how much money we were getting, and it's going to be substantially less than we had received in previous years, so it's for that reason that I personally will be voting against this as well, so.
So, we're going to do a roll call, and the roll call is on the mayor entering into this cooperation agreement.
Okay. Trustee Luisee.
Opposed.
Trustee Andino.
Opposed.
Trustee Lang.
Opposed.
Mayor Eklund.
Opposed. Unfortunately, Tom Giordano was not able to make it, he actually had to run out of town on emergency flight yesterday for business, so, but he did give me a statement, which I will give to the clerk, and she can go ahead and put it into the record, on this particular resolution. But he was not in favor of it, by the way. So, that's going to bring us to resolution number 12, which is authorizing the acceptance of an $8,000 donation from the Rotary Club of Eastchester for improvements to the Pocket Park, soon to be renamed something else other than Pocket Park, which is in the vicinity of the Crestwood Train Station. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you so much. Thank you for coming tonight, too.
Trustee Luisee.
In favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number 13 is approving vouchers in the amount of $209,055.47. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Luisee.
Favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. And I, one more, it's a last-minute resolution, it's for a block party, and so it's going to be resolution number 14, it'll be authorizing the use of Sylvan Avenue for a block party, which will be on July 7th, right? July 7th? And I guess we will, what do we normally give permission for? Noon to midnight. Okay, so the time will be from noon till midnight, and that's it. So block parties all over the village. So this one's gonna be on July se, uh, July seventh, okay. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Trustee Luisee.
In favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. And that's gonna bring us to the discussion portion of our meeting. And tonight, we're gonna talk a little bit about field lighting, and I'm gonna talk, ask Gary to maybe chime in on this. We, we've had some requests by some residents to ask us to put, to change our code to eliminate field lighting, and I know we talked about this on Thursday, so give us a little guidance here on this.
So what, what happens is, I think this was prompted by Concordia's application for the new soccer field. They're, they were before the planning board, and they were gonna redo their field, put up new bleachers, a stand. And in their initial proposal, they had wanted to put up stadium lighting, 'cause they wanted to have night games and night practices, and from the outset, there was huge public opposition on this. Concordia ended up withdrawing that part of the application, and they eventually got approval for the field, which is, is gonna be hopefully going up shortly. But I know the residents had come to the board meeting last time, to this board, and says, hell, hey, why don't we start, why don't we?
Sorry?
That's okay. Why, why don't we, why don't we look into banning stadium lighting? So what happened is, we, we had discussed this, really the only place in the village that could have stadium lighting, which is a private field, would be Concordia. So this law, if the, the board's inclined to pass the local law, would basically just prevent Concordia's field from having stadium lighting. The village, I know, has stadium lighting, but we're the village down at the Main Street Park. But this would, again, prohibit Concordia from having it. I've spoken to Concordia, the people in Concordia, and they have no intention of coming back before this board and requesting stadium lighting. But, you know, who knows, things may change, and...
But if we adopted it, it would, in essence, it would be, well, it would be impossible, but a future board could say, you know what, we want stadium lighting everywhere, right?
Absolutely. So, you know, the next board, you know, in the future, might come in and say, you know, well, lighting's changed, you know, they can focus lighting, it won't disturb anybody, and they should have lighting there, because, and they could, they could change that local law. They could also, if Concordia ever wanted to, they can go to the zoning board for relief of that local law, saying, hey...
Even though you have, that's why you have a zoning board.
We're looking for a variance from this, because now the lighting's changed, and it won't affect the, you know, the neighbors, and I would suspect that we'd have the same public opposition, but I, I don't expect Concordia to do that anytime soon, because they said they have no interest in doing it.
Okay, all right. Anybody else have any thoughts on it? That's right, it's, I, we kinda beat that horse.
Well, I, I, you know, I, I guess the only thing that, and you, again, you touched upon this, and we talked about it at the work session, we have stadium lighting down at the Main Street Park, so...
We do.
So how do we, and...
Well, we're exempt from...
But I'm just, it's a, it's a rhetorical question.
Well, I think, yeah.
No, no, I wasn't asking you, it was a rhetorical question.
Given that we have had so much opposition by residents, I would wanna make a decision based on the current board. So even if someone else decides that they're gonna change it, then I think each one of us should make a stand and say what we feel about it today. So that's, that's my take on it.
So to, to make a change, walk us through the steps, where you have to have a public hearing, obviously?
Have to have a public hearing, there would have to be, what's that? Well, first we draft a local law. That would present before the board, banning the, the stadium lighting, the public hearing, and then you'd have to, you know, I guess, would it have to publish the, publish it, and then?
Open a public hearing, have a public hearing, and then another pass or...
Right, and then they would have to redo the zoning code. You'd have to get a company to update the zoning code, which is pretty straightforward.
Can we bundle it with something else, so it's not a standalone expense?
Yeah, I think, um...
You know, 'cause I know that there, we have some other changes that we're looking at.
Right, we, we had discussed some other changes. I think there was some parking we were looking into, in the front yard parking.
Right.
I don't know if the board was in favor of that at the time, but this board can say, okay, we can, we can table this until we have some other zoning changes come up, and then put it all together, 'cause I don't think anything's gonna happen with Concordia, you know, anytime soon.
Yeah, I mean, I would like to see it put in place, but I'd hate to spend the money. And I always remember, actually, Sue Chamarra told me, I remember years ago, it was expensive each time we passed a local law. She would, you know, we, aside from just the notice in the newspaper, at the time, it's probably different now, but at the time, it was a company that actually had to reprint the whole darn book. I mean, it was just crazy expensive, so. Yeah, I'd be in favor of, you know what, we just, you know, keep this in our mind for the next time, we're gonna go ahead and actually spend the money for some other. I know there's some zoning changes for front yard, or some setback issues that we talked about, that Steve Alfassi actually even started, so...
That's correct.
So I'm good with that.
Move on that.
Okay.
And again, Concordia, spoken to them, and they have no intention of coming back, asking for it anytime soon, so.
What's the stat? Can you give us a little stat? I know I'm kinda off, off-script here a little bit, but they're moving forward, I mean...
Well, they received their approval by the planning board.
Okay.
They're gonna be spending a lot of money on that field, I think it's, it's a nice project. I know this board, tonight, approved the crosswalk from Rose Avenue. They're going to have a nice turf field, new stadium seating, they're gonna have a press box, they're gonna have a little locker area with a concession stand, so it's gonna be some nice improvements. And, you know, the planning board put a lot of restrictions or conditions on them when they have games there, for traffic, for the, the sound, everything. So the planning board, I think, did a nice job, you know, getting that project through. And Concordia was wonderful, they, they really listened to the, the neighbors, and every, every issue that the neighbors brought up, I think Concordia addressed it.
I've talked to a lot of the neighbors who live in that area, and they all seem thrilled now, so.
Right.
Where they were very angry at one time, they were all...
Yeah, that's right. First meeting, I think we, I may have had thirty people at the planning board. The last meeting, I think one came and didn't speak, but I think they spoke to Concordia afterwards and thanked them.
Good. Well, that's nice, that's nice to hear. Thank you. All right, that's gonna bring us to our departmental reports to the board, and we're gonna start, as we always do, with our chief of police, John Costanza.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the board. Just a couple of things to go over. First, I just wanted to mention that the Macaulay-Conception School Carnival took place last weekend, and went, went off without any problems. I know in the past, we've had some issues there. This was a, a really uneventful, as far as a public safety point of view, and I think the weather somewhat cooperated with them, so I think it was a very successful event. I just wanna thank Lieutenant Andrew Zerolnick, who coordinated and was the incident commander every night that the carnival took place. I wanna thank our law enforcement partners, the Eastchester Police Department, the Westchester County Department of Public Safety, and, and the, and the MTA police, who also had a presence at the train station throughout the carnival, too. So in the past, we had some issues with people taking the train and starting some disorderly processes from there, going up to the carnival. So all our partners participated, and because of their hard work and diligence, it went off really well, so congratulations to all of you here.
Thank you.
On May twenty-fifth, the fifth grade Cottles School had their dare graduation. I just wanna commend Police Officer Evan Piazza, he, he was instructor this year, he did a great job. Congratulations to all the graduates, I know they enjoyed the program, and it was, unfortunately for me, it was, I think, the first one that I've missed in, since the inception of dare in our...
We gave you a shout-out, so.
But I had a good reason, because I was attending the graduation of our newest police officer, Brian Madden, it was going on at the same time, he's graduated from the police academy, and so congratulations to Brian also. He's now field training with us, and another five or six weeks, he'll be out on his own, so we're, we're getting back to full force.
That's wonderful.
I just wanna talk about what I'm going, I know you, you have a pretty busy agenda next time around, but I'm going to pile something else onto it, I think, for your consideration. I want to consider eliminating the traffic signal at the corner of Fisher Avenue and Marbledale Road. I'll give a little history of, as to why it's under discussion. When we, last summer, we lost one of our signals at Main and Cameron, and all it was, was the controller, it's a computer, basically, these days, and it controls the signal and the walk signals. Just to upgrade that, single computer operation, some of the pedestrian signals, cost in excess of twenty-eight thousand dollars. So our village administrator had asked me, as part of a capital project, let's take a look at all of our signals, see what needs to be done as far as maintenance and, and replacing some of the old fixtures and, and mechanisms. To further compound things, this past winter, the traffic signal at Winter Hill Road and Midland Avenue came crashing down in one of the storms. Just a temporary fix to that signal cost in excess of a hundred thousand dollars, and we still have a lot of work to do. We have to engineer new structures, new fixtures, and ballpark to replace the whole signal is going to cost in excess of two hundred thousand dollars, moving forward. The signal at Marbledale and Fisher was, is old, has a lot of the old metal stanchions and fixtures that are holding up the span wire, and our concern is that those fixtures are also rotting and in need of replacement, as well as some others in the village, but that's the most critical right now. So it was first looked at from an economic standpoint, is it, it's something we have to do if we're going to maintain that signal? But then, the bigger question is, when we looked at all of the signals throughout the village, are all of them necessary? Have there been some changes in traffic patterns, or even geometry of, of the, of the intersections that may warrant a change? Or taking a look, at least, at eliminating a signal or two? When we look at the, the intersection of Fisher and Marbledale, we know that the geometry has changed over the years, and that we have made that intersection much safer by eliminating the wide curves coming down Fishery Avenue to turn onto Marbledale in a northbound direction. We've narrowed the walkways, the pedestrian walkways are much narrower, much easier to navigate than they were just eight or ten years ago. And we looked at the traffic patterns as to, you know, what's so different there than, for argument's sake, Lincoln and Marbledale, where there is a four-way stop. So there's a process to eliminating a signal, and the first process is to get traffic signal count, traffic counts, what direction, how many cars are going in each direction. We have some data that we had from when the hotel was being planned, so we, we looked at that, and, and most recently, Westchester County did us a favor and put some counters out there, and we're waiting for those results, which we really are expecting any day. So first, we're gonna look at the counts and say, is it feasible? Is there a balance of north-south traffic, as well as east-west traffic? And if we think that it works, that, you know, the traffic counts are not that far off, the first step in the process is, is that we would put up signs saying, this signal is under review. And follow, following that, we would install four-way stops and put this signal on a four-way red flash, so everyone has to come to a stop. That process or trial period would last at least ninety days, during which time we expect feedback from neighbors, from people that, that visit Tuckahoe, that use that, those streets, and, and see if it's working or not. You know, I've spent a lot of time at that intersection, I believe it's going to work, I think it brings some added traffic safety, so it's not just an economical decision. I think it really enhances the traffic safety by creating a four-way stop there. I think that in some ways, even though everyone, everyone has to come to a stop, it will move traffic along in, in a more even pattern, because as all of us know, if you're going east-west on Fisher Avenue, and somebody's looking to turn left or right onto Marbledale Road, and there's oncoming traffic, those cars all start stacking up, even with a green light, 'cause it's not wide enough to go around. So I think everyone coming to a full stop and then being able to proceed, in a lot of ways, is going to move traffic more efficiently. So, look, it's, it's a study, so I just, I want everyone to understand that we're going to take a hard look at it, and if it doesn't work, or, or the feedback is so negative, the signals are still up there, and then we just take them off flash, we take down the signs, and we go back to where we were today. But I think it's, it's, it's worth taking a look at, I think it's going to enhance traffic safety, I think it calms traffic down a lot. A lot of complaints that I get of residents on Fisher Avenue is that when the light is green, east-west, that cars are, are going at a high rate of speed, so now everyone has to come to a stop. So I think there's a lot of pluses in, in taking a look at this, and again, it, it is just a study at this point.
So when you first brought this up to me, of course, my initial reaction was, absolutely not. I live two doors away, and, you know, that was my mom who got that traffic light put in when I was a little, you know, when, when we were kids, you know, and, and that was like a big thing. So having time to really reflect on it and listen to what you said, you know, so now I pay attention, and I'm real, every time I, I go through that intersection, which is I don't know how many times a day, I'm really studying and conscious, and you're absolutely right to the things you've said. One of the things I noticed, when we put that bump out, which really stopped the tremendous speed in coming down Fisher Avenue, swooping onto Marbledale Road, but, you know, the purpose of that was to get people to come up and almost have to stop to make a ninety-degree right turn onto Marbledale Road. But what it also did is it, before we needed to have that, when somebody would come up to the light, somebody could swoop around to the right of them, and they can't do that. And exactly what you're saying is true. The traffic is, on a green light, the traffic is stacking up towards the post office, not necessarily all the way up to where the Eastchester Post Office is, but it's stacking. And with the Palpatina, and, I mean, that area is just, there's always cars, but you, you know, before they were there, you didn't have a lot of traffic parked along the side of Fisher Avenue. You didn't have really a lot of parking, even in front of our houses. Now, you know, that restaurant alone, you know, it, it's amazing how many people go to that restaurant. So they're, they're constantly coming onto our street, they're making U-turns in the Ryan's driveway, and my, my driveway parking on our area, so a lot of traffic there, and yeah, I'm, I'm really interested to see. You know, as I came down here today, and I'm waiting for the red light, and I'm thinking, all right, so if there's a stop sign, there was no traffic there, I'm gonna stop and I'm gonna turn. So, yeah, I'm really interested to see how it's gonna work out.
It's not just vehicular traffic that we're concerned about. Obviously, with the park there, we're, we're concerned about children crossing and, and pedestrian crossing, and right now, it's an exclusive pedestrian signal, which means it comes to a four-way stop when somebody waits. But the problem is, and you live there, Mr. Ryan's here, I think he could attest, nobody waits. I mean, when they think it's safe to cross, they cross, and it, and it's dangerous when it's a green light and, and people, you know, the law is, is that at a, at a stop sign, the pedestrian has the right of way. With a signal, the cars have the right of way, and people don't realize that, and they cross, and it creates a hazard. So it really addresses pedestrian safety as well as vehicular safety, and again, I think it's, it's worth taking a hard look at.
So we'll look at the data. I saw they put the rubber tubes out to count how many vehicles, so I guess you study that first, then the next step. At, I guess at our next meeting, we would have to take action to give you permission to put the stop signs up, is that it?
And again, it would be on a trial basis.
Sure, yep.
I mean, every engineering study says that it should be in place as a trial for at least ninety days.
Right.
So the good part is, is that it starts in the summer months, when there's a little less traffic than usual, but it will definitely run into schools, you know, schools opening up again, and, you know, I think, you know, we're not rushing into it, everything will stay in place, so if we change our minds, there's, there's really no cost in, in, you know, going back to where we are today.
Okay, good.
Chief, do you, do you think the lighting is sufficient in the evening to illuminate the stop signs, so people will be stopping? I mean, I...
I do believe that it's, it is now, but again, that's something we could easily look at, and, you know, we're hoping, and I, I know the mayor and the board talked about having a resident meeting, meeting in the summertime at that park.
Yeah.
So, so, I mean, it's perfect timing, and we wanna hear from the residents.
Yeah, we'll, we'll definitely have a, right in the Fisher Avenue Park. We haven't been there in a while, so it's a good, good opportunity for it.
And it's beautiful now.
August twenty-second, okay, all right, good.
And the beautification committee has made it beautiful.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Nice place to have it now.
That's all I have.
And that Eagle Scout project.
Next we'll work on Main Street.
I'll tell you, I see there's a lot of illumination there at night. Where it's very dark is up at, and Frank and I will talk about this, at Lincoln and Marble Dale. That's where, you know, sometimes when I'm coming up Lincoln and I make the ride onto Marble Dale, it's such a wide, you know, we talked about even making it narrowing that, and it's so wide. If there's an evening train and people have dark clothing, I mean, I myself have almost clipped somebody, it's like, oh my, you know. You're in shock, that's a real dark area there. So, but that's for another day, okay, thank you chief.
Thank you, chief.
Frank, you have anything for us tonight? We're all talking about you tonight, Frank, so.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the board. I also wanna thank Mary Cheyenne Mauer and the Rotary Club for their efforts in moving this pocket park along. I think it would be a great project, I'm hoping to have my final conceptual drawing by Friday. And it encompasses, just briefly, a planting area in front out of stone, mixed yonker stone with a lot of Tuckahoe stone, a series of pavers in between. We're looking at possibly five or six benches. We were looking at the possibility of tables, but I, we have to look at that a little bit more. I think it becomes a liability for us having tables there. But, you know, maybe we could have one of the restaurants in a local area sponsor that and also ensure the area for tables and chairs. But a planting area, screening the train tracks, and hopefully a trellis that encompasses the entire planting area in the front only. With the possibility of having some decorative posters. They could be art posters, you know, simple four-by-four art posters, maybe a historical poster, just signifying some beauty and some history of Tuckahoe. These are some of the things that we're working on, if we don't get them all done this year, it's all part of the ongoing project. But again, thank you to Mary Cheyenne Mauer and the Rotary Club. I also wanna touch on Con Edison's gas work on Midland Avenue. It seems like it's going on forever, it is.
Yeah, they're gonna retire on this job, or what?
They are, they just recently tied in all the individual homes. So they're looking to move out of the area, complete Bronxville. But they're also gonna be working to Midas May, up Winter Hill, Folling, and Henry.
Oh, man.
Which during this process, they realized that these are the areas that also need to be changed.
All the streets that we paved.
Correct. That encompasses this project. But the good part about this, and I don't know if it really is a good part, but the timeframe should be cut in half. Because it's not steelwork, it's gonna be plastic work. The mains will be enlarged, and as everybody know, plastic work just moves along a lot faster. So within a couple of months, I'm hoping to complete this whole project.
And they'll have to pave curb to curb, right?
You know, I always know when they're gonna come into the area, because I paved the road the year before. So that's a sign for me to know that they're coming in. And, you know, just so the community knows, I send them a list of roads, that's utility companies, I send them a list of roads every year. Suez, Con Edison, and whoever else there might be, and say to them, you know, listen, these are the roads we're paving. Please tell me if you plan on doing any work on these roads. And their response to me was, no, you're okay, go ahead, pave the roads. A year later, there they are, and they've done this quite a bit to us, so I'm not wastefully spending. Me and David, we're not wastefully spending our taxpayer dollars. We are trying to inform them and be proactive and get these roads paved. Because these same roads that they're tearing apart within the next couple of months have been paved just last year.
Yeah, amazing.
You know, we'd like to take that money and put it elsewhere, because I get the utility companies to pave curb to curb when they do this work. At a savings to all of us here in Tuckahoe. But with that said, DPW will also be replacing the west-side curbs on Midland Avenue. Right now, it's a combination of smaller stones, monolithic concrete stones, and some other broken-up stones. Nothing really matches, and it's just really an eyesore. And specifically, it creates a drainage issue for everybody on that side, so we would like to correct that. We're gonna be placing four-to-six-foot sections of curbing, granite curbing, along that, I think it's a nine-hundred-foot span or a thousand-foot span. So we'll be starting that shortly also. Also tomorrow, we're, the Main Street Park is my next topic. We're going to be resurfacing the basketball court. Repairing a lot of the cracks, a lot of surface cracks, which ultimately just makes the basketball court deteriorate quicker, especially during the winter months where we have snow falling on it, the thawing season, water gets underneath it, and it heaves the basketball court in certain sections. So it's very important that we do that. The community fund actually gave us fifteen-thousand-dollar grant funding last year to complete this resurfacing. Before we do that, we need to replace the posts, the basketball posts, the backboards, the hoops. That material has been ordered, it's coming in tomorrow. So to let the community know is, there's two full basketball courts there. We're gonna be working on one entire basketball section at a time, basketball court section at a time, which consists of the two hoops. Once we complete the installation of those posts and backboard, we will move on to the next two. So, it will be partially open to the community, but I ask that everybody please be cautious. There will be barriers around, there'll be posts, flags, and hopefully it'll just be safer. But we'll make it as safe we possibly can, because I know it gets a lot of, gets a lot of play there. Once we complete the posts and the backboards, then the surface company will come in next week, which hopefully will be done by then, to resurface the entire basketball court. And that should be done by the end of the week. We were trying to encompass this entire project before school lets out, because I know that's when it gets its ultimate playing time. And that should be done by the end of next week.
We found out that the town isn't having their basketball games in the park this year, so it may not, may not be a huge problem for you.
Right, they're not having it this year.
Yeah, that's right. So that's good.
Makes it even easier for me.
Yeah, glad that it's gonna get done. And they'll stripe it right after they pave it.
They'll stripe it, they're gonna seal it, seal and mesh all the cracks in preserving that. And they're gonna color code it, it's gonna be the same color that was there, it's a red and a green, and then stripe the entire basketball court.
Finish it off nice, put a lot of work into that park, yeah.
Any questions?
That's good, very good, thank you Frank.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Mr. Galuzzi, Johnny Galuzzi. I know that we're getting ready for our big blockbuster fireworks show, summertime fireworks. And we're gonna have some entertainment there, there's gonna be great food vendors, so I'll let you tell us all that.
Good evening, board, mayor. I'd like to publicly welcome our new trustees, Danny Lang and O'Bira Endino. I'm sure they'll make a fine addition to the community, I've talked to each of them and had a semi-formal relationship with them over the last few months. I'm sure they'll do a fine job, and welcome. Our Tuckahoe fireworks date is Saturday, July fourteenth, it's at Parkway Oval Field in Tuckahoe. The rain date will be the very next day, and I think we'll have good weather. We've had good weather for the last seventeen years, we've never been rained out. So, yeah, knock on some wood. So, it's the fourteenth, it's a Saturday, and every, the entertainment will begin at seven PM. But you'll wanna come down there a little early and get your spot on the hill so you can watch the show. We have a rock and roll band, the Robert Santa Band. We have a young lady named Nikki DeRosa that's going to be singing pop music, so we'll have a little music for everybody. And the DJ will be playing fifties and sixties music, so there's a good balance of entertainment and music for everyone. Young, old, and tiny, tiny kids will enjoy it too. Okay, closing out the event will be the Grucci Fireworks Show, of course, at nine-thirty, nine-thirty at Dark. And that's sponsored by the Generoso Pope Foundation. They sponsor it every year, the Grucci Fireworks. And it's a great display, you'll wanna come down and make sure you see that. Have some food and enjoy the band and the music. Thank you.
Thank you, Johnny, appreciate it, we're looking forward to that. Camille, anything, Clark's office, okay, Gary, anything?
The taxes have been mailed out?
Oh, I'm sorry, taxes, I'm gonna cut you right off, I didn't want to give that bad news out, so go ahead. Tax bills are mailed out, right? I know that, I got mine.
You can return them by Ju- July second, no penalty.
Okay, good.
I know deputy, the deputy mayor usually gives a synopsis of the zoning and planning board, so I have the agendas and I can go over them with the board. Zoning board is on Wednesday, this Wednesday, June thirteenth, seven-thirty. Four applications, two-eighty-three Marble Dale, which is converted basement to a finished basement. I believe this is a two-family home, so even if the board changed the law, they would still have, this applicant would still have to come before this board. The other one was a two-forty-two White Plains Road, they're looking for a subdivision, they're gonna build a new house on a proposed new lot. There's sixteen Columbus, which is Pinot Pallett right down here, they're looking to reduce the parking spaces that they were required to have per their, per their original approvals. I think they were required to have four, I think they're looking to reduce that to zero. And then we have forty-seven Rogers, which is legalizing a two-family to a three-family. That's a use variance that they're seeking. So those are gonna be before the zoning board on Wednesday. And then we have the planning board, planning board's a light agenda. There is basically one application, it's for two-seventy-three Columbus Avenue, which is for a learning center, that's above the bank building. And there's, the business exists now, and they're just looking to legalize it and go through the proper channels. That's the only thing on the planning board agenda, so that should be a very short meeting.
Now, I noticed that in the old Chase Bank Building that Remax has signs up, so I guess their Remax Realty is moving into that?
Yeah, that's my understanding, I think they haven't been before any of the boards. I don't think, I think they could've just went down there, I was surprised they didn't need to come before the board.
Oh, okay.
But that's my understanding, so yeah, the board is going down there. So those are the two agendas.
Thank you. David, anything for us?
There are a few things, I think you and maybe some of the trustees will touch on them. But one thing I just kinda wanted to mention to the public and share is one of my field trips down to New York City last week, and how interesting that was. So, this is not something that we talked about at a meeting for quite some time. It was back in October of two thousand and six, MTA came to the village, met with the mayor and myself in regards to doing some improvements to the Crestwood Train Station. At that time, they gave us a conceptual design. Personally speaking, I don't think it necessarily fit with Crestwood, I don't know, mayor, you can always, you know, chime in on your opinion, I don't-
We both gave him a piece of our mind.
Yeah, it didn't work for that area down there. Fast forward to October of two thousand and seventeen, a year later, they came in with a much improved design. I think it's going to look really nice down there. They call it, I think it's a kiss-and-ride or something like that, where, and it's gonna have improved benches, and they're gonna redo kind of the overpass down there, make some ADA accessibility paths, redo some of the landscaping, a lot of brick work that's gonna go down there, it's gonna look really good. So, last Tuesday, the village, village representatives, and I went down there, went down to the MTA. MTA Arts and Designs is getting involved in regards to the Crestwood Train Station. As they pick out, every station they do, and if you think about all the Metro North Lines, all the subway lines, there's always an art component, and it's kind of really interesting. So, went down there with a couple of local artists from Pace University and Sarah Lawrence University, and a couple of other local artists, and they actually had a panel where we went through thirty-five artists that submitted and had to kind of wean it down to eight artists that would then put in proposals for the Crestwood Train Station. And it was really interesting, so some of the arts they're looking for is doing some, on the windows of the overpass, on each side of the windows of the overpass, some other artwork inside the overpass, and then having some sort of, like, some of the railing on the ADA railing, having some sort of art incorporated in there. So, I guess, you know, the reason I wanted to bring it up is that between April and October of next year, they're actually gonna be doing this, so they're really kind of ramping up the design of this this year. And it's gonna be really interesting, it's gonna look good for Crestwood. Had a conversation with one of the engineers today. If you recall down there, all the power lines and a lot of the lines were put underground, and we ran some conduits, because our last remaining, the last remaining overhead wires down there for the traffic signal and the pedestrian signal. I don't know if we're gonna be able to get rid of those overhead wires, however, in regards to this, we're gonna try to work with them to be able to at least remove maybe some of the pedestrian signals and try to get at least those wires gone. So we're gonna be working with them to do just general improvements in the area in the next year. So it's gonna be, it's gonna be moving fast, they have a very strict kind of deadline, it's gonna be a design-build through MTA. So, by August of this year, they actually have some preliminary construction designs ready. So it's gonna be moving very fast.
They're spending a lot of money on it, too.
They're spending a lot of money, but, you know, what, the reason why I wanted to talk about it is because you could see the time and effort they're putting into these stations. There's five stations they're doing in regards to this initiative. White Plains is the first one they're starting, I know, I think it's Portchester, Crestwood, and a couple of others. So, I think it's, it's gonna be really nice for that area, it's really gonna kind of change that area, and I think the design fits in with that area.
It does, yeah.
It's gonna be really nice, and we're gonna see that kind of ramp up over the next year, so it'll be definitely interesting.
Thank you for making that trip, too, appreciate it. Alright, so miscellaneous business, next Monday, June eighteenth, we're gonna have a really interesting thing that we're gonna do. If anybody's been watching our local cable channel, you're gonna be seeing a rebroadcast of former trustee Tom Dougherty. Many years ago, it was back in the nineties, he actually did an interview with five mayors. The current mayor at that time was Phil White, and they had Mayor, oh my god, I know that Sonny Dalton was part of the panel. I forget who they all were at this point, so, yes, Mayor Bob D'Agostino. So, we're gonna do the same thing, actually, we're gonna do it next Monday. I'll be here, Mayor Fitzpatrick, Mayor Mike Martino, Mayor Bob D'Agostino, and Phil White. Mayor Phil White is just over-the-top excited about it, so. And we were able to track down Tom Dougherty, so he's gonna come up and he's gonna actually interview us again, so, or interview Phil again, I should say. So, we're gonna have it right here, and we're gonna run it live, and then we're gonna rebroadcast it. So, everyone's welcome to come on in and make faces at us, try and get us to laugh, but it should be a real, real fun evening, so I'm looking forward to it. As Johnny said, our fireworks are on July fourteenth. I didn't realize it was a rain date, so I'm glad he mentioned that, so the rain date will be on Sunday. Our next village board meeting is gonna be on Monday, July sixteenth. And that is gonna bring us to our Board of Trustee member reports, and this month, we are gonna start with trustee Greg Voisey.
Thank you, mayor. I'm gonna start first, I would just like to thank the chief and your department. I really appreciate the installation of those signs that have been put up at the crosswalks in the southern end of the village to sort of help those people that frequent those parks. So thank you for putting up those signs, hopefully it's gonna work. I'm gonna start off with the Tuckahoe seniors, who next Tuesday, June nineteenth, are gonna be taking a trip down to Arthur Avenue to do some shopping in the area, and then of course, conclude the day with lunch at Ann and Tony's. Then they will be celebrating the Fourth of July on June twenty-eighth with Jenny's Famous Tube Steaks. And among other things, they'll have baked beans and sauerkraut and potato salad, so that'll be on June twenty-eighth. And I'd like to just mention something to the community. A few weeks back, the Bronxville High School seniors were their students. They spent the day with the Tuckahoe seniors, they put on a dance show. There were some performances by singers, guitar players, they had a pizza party, and then they enjoyed a afternoon of bingo with the seniors. And I was just so impressed to see the interaction between those high school students and our seniors. And this is something that they've been doing, you know, for quite a few years, but for some reason this year, I guess with everything that's been going on across the country with the students, it was really something to see these kids interacting with our seniors. So, hats off to those Bronxville High School students. Lastly, the history committee, I mentioned this last month, they were very instrumental in helping the veterans commemorate Memorial Day this year by providing them with information and digital slides going back to World War I. Then, many of you may have seen this, there was a, an article on the front page of the Journal News, which highlighted the- the unknown soldier here in Tuckahoe. And our very own Mayor Phil White and Alice were featured prominently on the front page and in the article as well. And as, again, I, as the mayor mentioned, really do not miss this, uh, this interview with the mayor, it's on June eighteenth here at Village Hall at six PM. And, that's all I have, mayor.
Thank you very much. We're gonna move to trustee Andyna.
I will try to keep this short. The library has such a robust program that I never know what to report on and what to keep from you. But I would just encourage everyone to go to the library website, and just, there are so many different events going on, I'll highlight a few that they asked me to. So, for the summer, they're starting their summer adult reading program, Cruise Into Reading, so it's from June twenty-seventh to August twentieth. The Welcome Aboard Party featuring Sonia Turdianian, author of The Runaways, will be on Wednesday, June twenty-seventh at six-thirty, so they're asking everybody to get out. Her story looks at the issues of class and intimacy and the chaos of youth and the uncertainty of middle age. We also have the children's summer reading kickoff on Monday, June twenty-fifth, at the community center. So they're asking that we get the kids out, ages four plus, and also the teen, the summer reading kickoff for the teens, they're having their teen party on Monday, March, I'm sorry, June twenty-fifth, so they're gonna have pizza, snacks, and prizes. If you don't wanna cook dinner, good excuse to get to the library. Also, the library fundraiser was held on Saturday, for those of you who attended, it was pretty awesome. We had the concert by the New Westchester Symphony Orchestra, and the library raised two thousand four hundred and fifty-three dollars. Almost six hundred dollars more than last year, so that's great. They also received nine thousand dollars from the community grant fund to fund some of these programs that they're, they hold throughout the year, so that's pretty cool. They also had, oh, so today they had, I'm kinda upstaged the, the mayor. They had the poetry contest winners, winners where the mayor and I attended today. So throughout the year, they, the Tuckahoe Public Library presents the winning entries, they have three hundred poems read from students in the Tuckahoe and Eastchester School Districts, as well as the Immaculate Conception School. And there were seventeen winners of the poetry contest, and the mayor had the honor of presenting the winners with their awards. I would just indulge me for a minute, I would like to call out every single winner's name, because I think it's warranted. Marissa Sawa, Angelo Luke, Emil Sabrina Thomas, Sophia Jack, Yuna Ella James, Neve Carlo, Katie Nadia and Chloe. And I would love to, if you would hear, my favorite poem of all time. Was by Luke Ambrogio, grade four of the Ann Hutchinson School, and it's titled "School", and it reads, "When I go to school, I moan and groan and sigh. I wait a long and traumatizing morning until the recess bell lets us go outside. Then I feel my heart starts to soar and fly, but afterwards, we are all put through the exquisitely boring torture teachers call math. And just when I think an eternity it will last, finally the heroic savior, the dismissal bell rings, and then my mind fills with amazing and joyful things." I love that poem. So that's, um-
And he was very animated when he-
He was. He meant it. And then just the last thing, David, the, David Burke and Sarah Doris and I met about the newsletter, and it looks like our first issue will probably be out in September, so look out for that.
Looking forward to that, thank you. Trustee Lang.
Great, thank you, mayor. Okay, so I wanted to talk about the recent slam duck event, the slam dunk event, and how proud we are of Max Pierce for putting together such a wonderful event with the help of the E-Cap and Tuckahoe High School. I have a feeling he's gonna do some big things, so congratulations on that event, Max, good for you. And I just also wanted to talk about, oh, sorry about that. I wanted to make mention of the Memorial Day tribute at Eastchester High School. It was really a wonderful night, and I wanna thank Mr. Fix, Mr. Foster, and Mr. Pinto for assembling such a memorable program. In addition, I would like to thank and congratulate the Hill family and Corporal Ernest J. Hill of the United States Marine Corps for his long-awaited Purple Heart. It was an incredibly powerful moment, and a true honor to have been in attendance that evening for such a moving presentation. Thank you and congratulations. And to all of the young people, remember the three Rs, remember, I'm sorry, don't forget the three Rs. Remember, reflect, and respect, thank you so much.
Very true, very true, great ceremony, thank you. Yeah, it was. Thank you very much, trustee Lang. I've got a couple of things I wanna talk about, first, I wanna mention that since our last meeting, we had an interim mayor in the village of Tuckahoe for a day. Erin Gurkin, she is a student at the Cottle Elementary School, she was the winning student for this annual event, and I got to spend the entire day with her and her mom after swearing her in as a mayor for a day. She hit the ground running, she was down telling the chief how he's supposed to do his job down there in the police department, and she's a very energetic little girl, so I told her, you know what, maybe one day her picture will be out in the hallway here, so, it was a fun day. I wanna talk about something that maybe, I don't know if some of the residents are starting to see it, but the issue is Lime Bikes, Lime Bicycles. So, in the city of Yonkers, the organization called, or the company called Lime Bikes has, uh, they have a, an agreement with the city of Yonkers to provide these bicycles, and I don't know, some people have probably seen a few of them sporadically in the village of Tuckahoe, too. So, what is the Lime Bike and what is the program? So, I asked to meet with one of the principals, they actually came down here, they met with David Burke and myself, and they, this organization, they have sixty thousand bicycles all throughout the United States. They enter into agreements with the municipalities to go ahead and have their bicycle program in that municipality. So, right now they're in Nershell, right David, they're in Nershell? Or Half White Plains and Yonkers, okay. So Yonkers was a big launch for them, I know they had, the day we were meeting, they were getting another five hundred bicycles delivered. They had already had five hundred, so I, most people know, I, I have a scaffolding company which is located in Yonkers. And, it's funny, the day we were having this meeting, there's two or three of these bicycles parked right out in front of my shop. So I asked the guy, I said, alright, explain how it works, how is this different than the city bikes that we all see in New York City? So the city bike program is a rack bicycle program, where you actually take your bicycle, or take the bicycle, and it's locked into a rack system. You, I've never ridden a city bike, so I'm assuming that there's an app for that, you can unlock it, take the bike out, ride it to the next station and lock it into that. The Lime Bike program is totally different, there is no locking or docking station, they call them. So, what they do is, somebody will go ahead and download the app on their phone. They will rent the bike, it's very cheap, it was a dollar for a half hour, and they'll get on that bicycle, it, it may be, they may stick, or drop a half a dozen bicycles in front of the train station like in Yonkers. So then somebody gets off the train, they see the bike, they have the app on their phone, they'll go ahead and unlock the bike, and they'll ride that bicycle from Yonkers train station, maybe to their house. Then they'll just go ahead and, I guess, disengage that agreement that they have for that half hour, or whatever it is they use the bike, and that bike is now gonna sit in front of their house, so. So I asked the guy, I said, alright, so what's preventing these bikes from coming into Tuckahoe? And he said, well, we would need an agreement with the village of Tuckahoe to allow our riders to come into the village of Tuckahoe. So I said, okay, so, right now, if somebody rents one of your bikes, and they're coming down Tuckahoe Road, is there, like, is the bike gonna explode the minute they hit the Tuckahoe border, like, what's gonna happen? And, and he said, no, he said, but there, we advise them they're not supposed to come in Tuckahoe, so. Funny thing is, as soon as I left the meeting, I drove down Columbus Avenue, and there's one of these Lime Bicycles in the park and a lot of the community centers, so obviously that person didn't get the message, or maybe they get the message and they're like, hey, I'm, I'm still gonna go to Tuckahoe. But I guess the, the real issue is that they will not allow the bike to start from Tuckahoe, so how do they move these bikes around? So they have a warehouse apparently in Yonkers, they have a van, they operate twenty-four-seven, and they're actually always picking up the bicycles and putting them in locations where they would like to get people to ride the bicycles. So I said, okay. So, I'm a realist, and I realize, you know, whether we want Lime Bikes in Tuckahoe or not, or Bronxville, or Eastchester, or Scarsdale, you know what? They're gonna ride the Lime Bikes into Bronxville, like it or not, and leave them on Ponfield Road, and I'll bet they're probably there today. So, the first question I asked is, you know, what does the village get, do the, do you pay the village for this service? And, you know, what is the city bike organization paying the mayor and the city council of New York City? And I was surprised that the municipality gets no money from it at all, and in the city bike program, it's fully funded by Citibank, as well as they get some private donations. So, this is a private company, they do not pay the municipalities. So I said, okay, well you must have some type, I have to believe that if the city of Yonkers allowed you to conduct your business in the city of Yonkers, you must be insuring them, providing them with, you know, indemnification, hold-harm, everything, under the sun, which is clearly what I would like to see for us in the village of Tuckahoe. Just because if somebody's gonna ride one of these bikes and park it straddling it across Main Street, even though the rider has been advised that you don't block the sidewalk from somebody tripping over it, or you don't park it in front of, you know, don't park all these bikes in front of the mayor's house, and I have forty bikes on my front lawn. You know, there's rules and regulations of what they're supposed to do, but we know that not everyone's not gonna listen to that. So, the first thing that we've asked is that they get us copies of the agreements that they must have in place with the city of Yonkers, so we don't have to reinvent the wheel, we can actually look at that. We did not give him any indication that our board would sign an agreement with them, we said, the first thing, first step is we need to see what kind of protection would the village get before we would even entertain that. So, I bring it up because I, I think the reality is, you know, sort of like Uber, like it or not, they're, you know, they're gonna come and pick up passengers in your municipality. You can say that you can't have these bikes here, but I see them now occasionally in our municipality. It's, uh, you know, it, on some level, it's not a bad thing that, you know, you're getting people to actually use a bicycle, you know. If there was a safe zone in front of the train station, I mean, the reality is, I could imagine a lot of people would go from Eastchester down the hill to the Crestwood train station, but they're not gonna ride them back up the hill when the train comes in at the end of the night, so. Then I, I asked the guy that, I said, you know, what are you, what are you doing about, somebody is gonna ride down Fairview, you know, and come to the bottom of Main Street, they're certainly not riding up the hill. And he said, no, he said, but they're actually getting, they have twenty percent of their fleet is electric bikes, so I thought that was kinda interesting. So, we'll see, we'll see where this goes, I'm not suggesting that we take any action at all right now. I would certainly like our village attorney to look at some of the agreements that they've had with the municipalities, just so we're kind of, you know, forewarned as to, you know, whether we should take action. They, they don't look at us as, as they do the city of Yonkers, they're, they've had more usage in Yonkers than they have had in any other location in Colorado or San Francisco, he said, Yonkers has just been fantastic for them. So, you know, we asked all the questions, we, we read the newspaper like everyone else, and the front page of the paper, they're vandalized, they're thrown in the Hudson River, all that jazz, and he said, look, he said, you know, it's, it's gonna happen, he said, within a month or so, they'll stop vandalizing, they'll stop throwing them in the Hudson River, and I said, what about theft? And he said, actually, the bicycles are made with components that you can't use on, on another bicycle, they're really unique to that particular brand or, or model of bicycle. So, we asked a lot of questions, we got a lot of good answers, and I just wanted to bring it up, 'cause it's something that I think we're gonna have to deal with when there's fifty of these bikes and everyone's calling, you know, Frank at DPW saying, hey, there's a green bicycle parked on my front lawn, what are you gonna do about it? Or calling the chief saying, you know, let's get rid of these things. If anybody does have one parked in an area and you don't want it there, apparently there's a phone number on the bicycle itself, call them and the guy in the van who's working twenty-four-seven, he'll come over and pick that bike up and bring it back over to Yonkers. So, for now, I guess that's the way we're gonna manage this, and then we'll just have to kinda take it from there and see. And last for me is, I had a meeting last week with the hotel contractor. I've been asking for quite a while now to meet with the hotel contractor and his management team to kinda see what's going on, I'd like to know the status. So we had a sit-down meeting, we actually met in their trailer, which is good, so we could have a discussion about what we were looking at through the, through the window. I met with, with them, they have a new management team there, it's the same company, but they have new individuals who are managing their, or this project for them. Bill Williams, our building inspector, was there, or fire chief Brian Tween, he was there, he had a couple of questions, which I was glad he was there asking them. So, but the end of the day, you know, my questions are, you know, building department's here, building inspector's here, you're there, are we all on the same page? And I'm glad we had the meeting, 'cause there was just a little bit of miscommunication because of the fact that we hadn't had a meeting in a while. But I was happy that a lot of the things that Mr. Williams had raised were issues that they had either corrected and Bill wasn't aware of it, or they were in the process of correcting. Just some construction-related issues. So, they seem to be on track, from what they've told me, they were gonna be pouring concrete late last week, I don't know if they did. When you look at the site, you see that big steel section of the building, and then you see the wood section, well, they're, uh, the way they described it to me, they were gonna, they needed to pour concrete on that steel queue deck there, and then they're gonna actually tie, they're gonna marry the two things together. So, it's not gonna be two separate buildings, it's all gonna be one building. And where you see the wood now, I think that was up four stories, it goes up one more story over there. So, he said they're basically on track, they're looking at, uh, open the hotel in the spring of next year. So, I just asked if they would keep the lines of communication open, and if we can meet at least every month or six weeks, just to, you know, you know, I don't want things going sideways on the job, we wanna make sure, since they're, since they're into it, we wanna make sure that they get it done, and get it done safely. That's basically all I have, so that's gonna bring us to the second opportunity to address the board on anything, yes, sir?
Mr. Mayor, member of the board.
Could you just tell us your name, I'm sorry, I know you, John, but you gotta tell us, and your address.
John, East twelve Oak Avenue.
Okay.
Let's see if you can reexamine the, putting a speed bump on Oak Avenue. A lot of kids, they get out of school at two-thirty, at three-thirty, and, you know, the, when the commuters come up in the city at five o'clock, you know, speeding up Oak Avenue, a lot of the kids are out there. And I was wondering if you could, I guess, what steps will be involved to re, just reexamine the, the, the idea of introducing a permanent or temporary speed bump somewhere on Oak Avenue that you think would be fit?
Let's bring the chief up, 'cause I know he's got the stock answer for that, I kinda know what it is, but it's always, it's always better when the chief says it.
So several years ago, we developed a policy, village board approved it, and it, it's a step-by-step process if somebody wants a speed bump, what the process is, what the engineering standards are, what it entails. So, I already spoke to trustee Lang prior to the meeting, I will supply him with that policy. We'll meet with the residents after they have a moment to review it, and, you know, my past history in talking to segments of the community is, once they see the parameters of when a speed bump is effective, what some of the drawbacks are, and there are many, they usually walk away from the thought of having it. My own personal opinion is that it is not the most effective calming device to put out there. There's a lot of negativity to, towards these engineering standards that are there, but, look, it's ultimately, if they follow and it meets all of the criteria, then it comes down to the residents if, if they wanna endure some of the problems that are associated with them, so, you know, we- that are associated with them. So, um, you know, we put a lot of thought into developing that policy. I'll be more than happy to share it first with Trustee Lang, and he could bring it to, you know, to his, uh, community there, and, and then we'll have a discussion about it, like we do on most matters.
Okay, good. Excellent. Thank you. This is good, John? Okay. Anybody else? Um, yes, Sue, Sue Chimera. Ladies first, Mr. Laurie.
Uh, first, I would just like to say that, uh, Tocco beautification is very, very pleased to partner with the Eastchester Rotary, uh, to help, uh, with the new pocket park that's going to be created at the, uh, uh, corner of, uh, Lincoln Avenue and Columbus Avenue, at that intersection near, near the Bagel Loft. I think it will be a great improvement in that area, and it's a focal point, and I think it will really end up being a beautiful spot to create a park there. Also, beautification would like to thank the village board for, um, the two thousand dollar grant that was allocated in the twenty-eighteen, nineteen budget. It's really appreciated. Also, the, uh, beautification, uh, group is in the process of fundraising, and we, uh, sent several letters out to residents and businesses, and we hope we could get their support. It's very, very important to us to continue with the hanging baskets and the flowers. We would also like to thank Frank and his crew for the wonderful job that they do, and with the plantings, the baskets, and maintaining those baskets and flower beds and planters throughout the, uh, the year. So, we really appreciate it. The flowers really last till the fall until frost, so we're very happy, and we get a lot of nice compliments.
They're very beautiful, too. And isn't it a special color that is only for us?
Uh, yes, the geranium. It's a special geranium that is, uh, grown for Tocco by a grower, uh, in, um, upstate New York. So, uh, it's very important for us to help, uh, to continue with the project, because if we don't do it for a year, and we tell the grow, we don't have the money to go forward, he probably, we will not be able to order those geraniums again. He probably will not grow them. He needs the business to continue, so.
Right.
So, uh, we do get a lot of compliments. We do sell some of the plants, and we plant them throughout the village. And it really brings the village alive with the hanging baskets and the flowers. And, again, thanks to Frank and his crew, because they do a great job with everything.
And if somebody wanted to buy them, would they go to the farmer's market? Is that it, or?
Well, uh, we had a plant sale, um, not this, not yesterday, the Sunday before, um, and it was the first week of the farmer's market. So we were there for about four hours. Uh, we did not have enough geraniums to sell this year. But it's something to consider for next year if we're going to have that plant sale again. Uh, and it was the first day of the farmer's market. I, however, it was not a very good day. It was a windy day. It was a cold day. Not that many people were out. Uh, we actually got the plants from Nature's Cradle. He set everything up for us, and, uh, we sold the plants, and he gave us a, a small percentage. But it was lovely. We loved to see the people. People were happy that we were there. They liked our presence there. So, we hope to continue, and, um, we look forward to the support of the residents and the businesses. Uh, in order, without their support, uh, it's very, very difficult to continue. So we really appreciate it. Uh, as I said, we're in the fundraising mode right now, and we have received some, uh, donations, but, uh, really not enough to continue. So we hope we'll continue to get those donations.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Mr. Laurie.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the board. I'm Anthony Laurie. I live at one-two-three Waller Street. Um, Gary, do we notify the fire department that when we have blocked parties that the street is closed?
I, I don't. Um, save it any.
Police Department.
Oh, Chief, uh, Police Department does that.
Okay, thank you.
Chief, just confirm that.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Um, also, um, I did wanna mention a sad note that we, um, one of my schoolmates and a personal friend of mine and, um, um, veteran, uh, Tim Morris, he was a detective in Eastchester, Tocco High School man. In fact, I even met him in Vietnam. And we didn't meet by calling each other's names. We met by yelling "Tocco!" to each other, and that's how we met. So I just wanted to say, it's a sad note, today. Very good man. Tocco High School graduate, Eastchester police, and a US Air Force man.
He passed away?
Passed away this morning. On another note, I would like to let, um, you know, Mayor, in this community, we have quite a few churches of all different denominations. And it's a sad thing to know that people decide to put their trash out on Sundays. Now, I live on Waller Street. There's three houses on Waller Street that have entrances on Chestnut Street, exits on Waller Street. Last Sunday, one of them houses cleaned their yard up on a Sunday, piled eight, nine bags of debris out there, big shrubbery, all tied up, piled it out there. People are going to church, but they don't care. If you looked on Rogers Street, someone looked like they cleaned their house out, and there's a church right there, a marble place there. It's sad. Easter Sunday, right on Waller Street, Easter Sunday, someone put two mattresses and box springs out. If you went up on the top of Waller Street, there was an old stove up there. I mean, we have different days that we put trash out. Tuesdays, Thursdays, Wednesdays, we put our recyclables out. Friday and Monday, we put our garbage out. I did mention this to Mr. DiMarco, and he did tell me, give him a call, and, but I didn't. But this goes on every weekend, on a Sunday, everybody decides to put their stuff out, and if it's Thursday, it comes out on Sunday and stays there all week. It's sad. And like I said, you should've seen Rogers Street. If anybody passed by it, the trash that was out there. And, not because I'm a fire commissioner, but people put this stuff right against the fire hydrant. I literally get out of my car and move it away from there. Up on the Samuel Crawford monument, the other day, I got out of the trolley, they put political signs and moving signs and yard sale signs on that monument, and the fire hydrants, they put their political signs right smack against the fire hydrant. If the firemen had to come and use that hydrant up there, that's delayed. First, they'd have to move all the signs. There was a yard sale somewhere on Winter Hill Road. They put that sign over there, too. You know, let's, let the public see me with my big mouth complaining. Put your trash out the night before. There was a man put his trash out, holy Thursday night, his garbage, and it stayed out there, cause we didn't have garbage pickup on Good Friday. It stayed there until Monday. People walking down Waller Street, going to Assumption Church. It looked horrible, and it stunk. How does this get enforced?
Well, first of all, it's bad behavior.
We understand that.
Right. So, how do you enforce bad behavior? We'll start with that. You're here tonight, hopefully.
Bad behavior used to get whacked on your tailgate.
Um, as you mentioned, hopefully somebody is, you know, listening to tonight, to, listening to you tonight, and, you know what? And if it's not them, maybe it's the next-door neighbor saying, hey, you know what? I think that guy who was talking at the meeting was talking about you. You know, um, it, it raises the conversation, I think.
But this is not the first time I came here. I came here once before, but I don't think people either watch the TV or listen to it. But it's, it's sad to see this on a Sunday. Really is.
Mr. Laurie.
Whether it's near the Assumption, near the Shallow Baptist, near the Immaculate, but like you say, you can't control anybody. I can't control anybody, and they continue doing it.
Mr. Laurie, the problem in my neck of the woods is the people that, uh, do this are renters. So, it behooves me to keep calling, you know, DPW Yard, and they come and they put a sticker on, on the, you know, the illicit items. I know. You're absolutely right.
A box spring out on Easter Sunday?
I saw the, I saw the stove you're referring to the, uh, last weekend, and I thought, matter of fact, I mentioned it at the work session, uh, about that, about that stove. You're a hundred and ten percent right.
Hello? Anthony's correct. And how many times have I stood up here and, and said that Fridays, all we do, I have all my men going out full force, looking for anybody, putting anything out, else out for the weekend. It's one of my pet peeves, and I don't believe that, you know, garbage should be left out. I'm a phone call away, so if we have chronic, uh, people doing this, you know, I need to know who they are. And you're right, there's a lot of renters in our community, and they don't care. They move out at the end of the month, and they clean their homes on a weekend. Um, and I know nothing about it, you know? So, my job is to go out there, give them a warning. We ring doorbells. My garbage men, my sanitation men ring doorbells. They put oop stickers on everybody's door that needs it. We put warning labels on every door. And if they don't abide by what we're telling them to do, I fine them. I take them to court. We have one or two coming in tomorrow. So this is my job. This is what we do. And I do believe that the village should be kept clean. Uh, and I do ask neighbors, also be cognizant, that if you see something like that happening, even someone's starting to put out garbage, let us know. You know, we'll start it, you know, we'll start the process before it even happens. Uh, so again, you know, Anthony's right, uh, I knew nothing about this, but if I knew, uh, you know, sometimes it happens on a weekend or Sunday, and there's nothing I could do about it until Monday. Uh, that's why we collect bulk on a Tuesday, so nothing has really been left out all week. Uh, but again, any suggestions or any complaints or any problems that you're having within the community, I ask that people, please call me. Thank you.
We know you're passionate about it. Thank you, Frank. Appreciate it. Yes, sir?
Hello, Mike Dardano, sixty-two Chestnut Street. Uh, you know, one of the ideas for this might be as well, is that, um, maybe taking pictures and sending it to Frank, because you really, if, if the renter is gonna split, the landlord should be responsible. And finding is a, well, finding, but finding does, you know, change people's attitude. So maybe that's, if I see that, I will definitely take a picture and, and timestamp it and send it to you. Uh, two things. One is, uh, with this fair, fair, whatever, the, um, economic, um, party, I like to call it, for, uh, the, what the chamber's doing in July, what I'd like to see do, and I'm gonna, I'm requesting it now, is I would love to see the, um, Republican and Democratic, uh, social media pages, the Tocco United's gonna do that, promote this event. I think it would be great if we, uh, one of the things I talked about with Juan is, is that, um, the businesses that are involved are gonna promote it on social media. But I know most of the time, the social media tends to be for political things, but I think it would be great if each party uses their social media just to say that, hey, this event's happening. Not to promote a particular company, but I think it'd be great to reach out to their, to their audiences and say, hey, this is what's going on. We got, um, from Miriam, uh, I think it's a PDF or JPEG works for social media, on what the event is. So it might make sense. So I was gonna put something together and send it, you know, I can reach out to all you all and say, hey, this is a good idea. I think we should, we should post it, and then ask people to share it. Um, not just the people at the chamber, but local residents, post it on, you know, some of the Eastchester Moms and whatever, and really get it out there, cause I think it's a great, great thing for us to do. And it is July, so the more people we reach, the better, cause it's, you know, people might be away. So I think it would be a great thing if everybody sort of participated in that. So, just a suggestion. Uh, my second thing is, is that I'm glad you brought up the, uh, the brownfield, because I wanted to ask you a question. Have, have you heard about phase two there? Did they mention that? Anything about phase two there?
No, I'd met with the contractor who's building the hotel. Um, so we didn't talk, he has nothing to do with, uh, I'm sorry, phase two of where the restaurant's gonna be.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, we did touch on that, uh, just a little bit, um, which was, hey, when do you start in the hotel? And what kind, I'm sorry, the restaurant, what kind of a restaurant's gonna be? Uh, they're still very tight to the chest on what type of a restaurant. But he did mention that, uh, they will be starting, uh, this summer, they're gonna start to put in the foundation for that, which does mean soil removal, soil takeaway, just like they did before. Um, of course, they have to go through the same protocol that they went when they actually excavated for the hotel property itself. Um, he said something I, I didn't realize. He said that the, uh, sub-slab system, or I probably have the terminology wrong, but a lot of the, uh, systems are going in the basement of that hotel, and they have to be in place there to do whatever monitoring or something that happens. Obviously, I'm getting it all wrong, right? Um, and they, the state actually monitors that, uh, all the results from that equipment that's gonna be in the basement of the restaurant. And he said that stays there for a period of time. This is separate from the system that's in the hotel, but he said that stays there until the state issues some document that says coast is clear, everything is good, and then they can remove it from the basement. I guess they use the basement for storage. So, you know, I didn't explain it the way he obviously would explain it from a technical standpoint, but the message, uh, was clear that, uh, the same protocols will, uh, be ongoing, and we will, of course, engage our, uh, environmental engineering firm to make sure that it's, uh, that the remediation there is gonna be performed in the same fashion it was done on the first section, so.
Yeah, because what I understand, what I was told, they, they actually, uh, met with the fire department and spoke to the chief, and they're gonna go twenty feet down, which is five feet more than the fifteen feet they did before. And, and part of, I, I don't know the reason. I, I wasn't there. I don't know that. But I know that that particular section of the, of the brownfield had higher concentrations of TCE and PC, and that's probably one of the reasons why they've delayed the restaurant, too, because of that. And that's fine, but I just, I think it's, and I asked, um, Kevin Carpenter, I emailed him today, and I said, anything new? And he didn't mention it. He just mentioned that the, the DOH is reviewing their data, and they should have it soon. So, cause I mean, they said spring, it's now gonna be summer, but that's.
David heard the same, too.
Yeah. Which, which is fine, but I mean, that's, I just wanted to see if he said anything about it, and he, he didn't say anything about it. So, my, my point is, is that, as I said, I think in the last meeting about questioning things, I just wanna make sure that, cause we've had, there's been many circumstances where it's been said, everything's fine, it's clean, it's clean, it's clean. Well, if it's not, if there's an issue, that's fine. You know, tell us. Bill Canavan, at our last meeting in October, said that SA4 had not been cleaned. It had been, they, uh, put dirt over it. That was by the, um, by the gym. Well, not really by the gym, but sort of close to the, to the, uh, to the wall. And, um, they just put dirt on it, and it was fine, and then they remediated it in November. But in March, Linda Shaw said everything was gonna be clean. And then in January, in the Business Journal, Mr. Weinberg said, everything is gonna, everything's done. So, that's just, you know, it's, you know, it's okay. I get it. It's, um, you know, it's, it's going forward. Just say what's up. Don't sit there and say, everything's wonderful, everything's great. And it's not that this is like a, a danger per se, just be honest. And that's the problem that I have with this. So I'm glad that they brought up phase two to you, and I'm gonna continue to reach out to Kevin, Kevin Carpenter, just because he's, we got a nice little rapport now. And it'll be interesting to see when they decide to come. I mean, really, it might as well be better to have them come, like in the fall, when more people are there. I think it would be better than having them come in August. So it depends on what they decide. But anyways, I wanted to, to bring that up, cause I thought that was, uh, was important.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. Uh, Nichols Neighbor, one oh eight Sagamore Road. Uh, I was here a few months ago, and I asked a question about, um, the traffic congestion on Main Street, uh, as well as the waiting time, uh, at the light on Main Street in Deboe Square. Um, at the time, I know the chief touched upon it, and a few of you as well. Um, I know during the, the village elections, the candidates had put that that was gonna be a priority of theirs, that they were, uh, going to, uh, push for further analysis on that. So my question is, has there been any progress made on that?
On an analysis of the torturous, uh, torturous, uh, time that it takes for that traffic signal?
Yes. I mean, it, it's not just, if it was just me, it, it, you know, I'd let it go, but it, residents are continually, uh, complaining about that.
Right. And we hear it, too, obviously. And as you probably know, it's really a police department issue. We've talked to our chief, and it, you know, we're, we're kinda stuck between a rock and a hard place, which is, do we take an aggressive action that, uh, former trustee, um, Antonio Leo had suggested, which is, let's just stop the pedestrian, uh, uh, potential for hitting and engaging the pedestrian walk signals, and let's go to the New York City style, which is countdown on either side, and that's it. And, um, you know, the risk in that is, it would definitely shorten that duration of the, what we talked about, Almar, you have the number down, two minutes, what was it?
Two minutes, forty-five seconds.
Two minutes, forty-five second duration. Uh, would it bring that down to a minute and a half? Um, yeah, I'm, I'm, whatever it's gonna do, it would definitely. Yeah, whatever it's going to do, it would definitely bring it down. You know, are we all ready to sign off on, on not allowing a senior citizen to be able to engage that traffic signal and cross the street with a closed intersection of traffic on both ways, so they can safely get across this, across the street? That's a tough call. I mean, that's something that I don't think any of us are ready to go ahead and sign off on right now.
Is there, is there a way then, because like the chief talked about, sort of doing a trial like he's doing on Fisher and Marble Dells, is there a way to do a trial?
That was, maybe I'll ask the chief, I know we've asked him, God, so many times, please come on up and talk about, I know he's, but he, but he does have a, you know, he's got a good answer for it. And I hope Antonio's at home watching this right now.
I hate to disappoint, but I don't have an answer.
I know, okay.
The matter is, it's a very, very complicated intersection, as I said before, it links up with Lake and Main, so any, anyone crossing one or the other intersection puts all four ways to a complete stop. That's the way it's engineered now. You know, we talked about, it's really, there has to be an engineering answer to this, if there is one. All I could say is that there was a lot of money spent in the past to try to get an answer to this, and there was none except to eliminate the exclusive pedestrian signal, which is a four-way stop, as you mentioned, to let people cross safely. The only answer, going back maybe six, six or seven years, was, you know, they, they did change the timing by seconds, like one and a half, two seconds, that was the best they could come up with, and that was done with computers, that was done with, you know, engineers really analyzing that, those intersections. So, the only change six or seven years ago was to not have an exclusive pedestrian signal anymore. And as you said, that's the balance, do people wait a few more, you know, it's frustrating, and I, you know, I travel that every single day also, but then the trade-off is, you know, do we allow children and, you know, seniors particularly, enough time to cross the street? And, uh...
I guess on a, on a trial basis, if we took black garbage bags and covered up the, you know, this, the walk, don't walk illumination boxes and duct taped off the opportunity to push the button, I mean...
Honestly, you don't have to do that, it's just changing the settings, so no.
Okay, so you could just disengage that.
You would still have, you would still have either east-west, northwest ability for people to cross, and again, you know, it's choosing, it's not exclusive anymore, so, you know, the, the problem is, there's green arrows there to move traffic along, so that complicates things even further. It's not an easy intersection, and sometimes it's way outside of my expertise to try to figure out, you know, what the answer is, and I, and I, you know, I've said it all the time and joked with, you know, former trustee Leo and others and members of this board, you know, there is no simple solution. And at the end of the day, there, it's going to come down to what is the decision, what's the priority, moving people along in their cars quicker or getting people safely across the street? And, and I get it, it's, it's frustrating and there's always a balance.
Yeah, I know, it's, it's the age-old question, I know, we've talked about it.
I mean, it's hard to believe, but I actually get calls from time to time saying, people don't have enough time to cross the street, even with an exclusive signal. So, we're not making anyone happy, no.
Yeah, true.
So, I guess, Nick, the question is, would you be willing to eliminate that pedestrian grace period?
I mean, it's not up to me, but, uh...
No, I'm saying, as you mentioned, this was an issue during the campaign, and I don't make, mean to make this a political discussion right now, but that being the primary focus of this conversation right now, and in my opinion, that being the overriding reason why, as much as I joke with the chief about this, and I live on Armavilla, so at eight o'clock in the morning, the traffic is backed out to, in front of my house, okay? So, I lived this for the last thirty-four years and it's, but, am I going to sign off on not protecting pedestrians, whether it's the children or the elderly or just, just a regular commuter? No, I'm not.
Totally agree.
And again, as the chief's mentioned, if we're going to shave off four seconds or five seconds on a light, does it really make a difference in our lives? If it does, wow.
No, I mean, I, I...
That's scary.
I agree with what you're saying, but I do think that further analysis on it, a traffic study...
Absolutely.
We're getting, you know, 100 Main Street...
Yep.
Once those are done, you're going to have...
Just think...
Old residents, the quarry...
Just think, this is the issue we've had for years before all these projects came online.
So, I, I would think it's time for maybe, at some point, maybe a new study, a new traffic study go forth and see if new technology or new ideas are brought forth through...
The overpass. The overpass from Tuckahoe Road that will take you right into 22, which I always joke with the chief about that as well.
That would be nice.
If you don't have to go into Tuckahoe, just take the overpass from...
So, I mean, I don't know, you spoke about that trial, maybe if that's something possible, if it's just changing the settings. I mean, I, I think a minute and a half would be enough for anybody to get across the street, but, I mean, you know, that's, that's...
I'm just, I'm just thinking, you know, again, there's so much traffic going from, coming from so many different directions at that spot.
No, I get it, I know it's a complicated issue, I know I've asked about it, I know others have spoke about it before.
Yeah.
I just think with the influx of, once the hotel's done, those visitors, residents from 100, as we fill up the quarry environments, I just think we might be due for a traffic study along those lines.
Um, chief, do you remember if, when Quarry Place, when it first started, did they do, some of these projects have done a traffic study. I don't know if 100 Main did one, um, and...
Bring the mic to you next time.
And, you know, every time you get a traffic study, you get an engineer, gives you a book that's like the size of the Bible, and, you know, you have to be a traffic engineer to be able to interpret the data that's in there, so you give it to somebody, you pay somebody else to tell you, look, what does this thing really telling me? And we don't really...
I mean, the, the truth, the, the truth of the matter is, is that whether it's 64 Main Street, 100 Main Street, or even the hotel down the future, has very little impact on that intersection or any intersection in Tuckahoe. The real crux of why there's so much traffic on Main Street particularly, is what's going on in Norrisell, what's going on in Yonkers, what's going on at Lord &amp; Taylor's in Eastchester, when, when, you know, Ridge Hill was built, when New Rock City was built in Norrisell, when, you know, the Lord &amp; Taylor Shopping Center was expanded and, you know, medical offices went upstairs. That created our traffic problem. 100 Main Street, the amount of traffic that that's going to have on any one of our intersection is, is miniscule, and even to 64 Main and even the hotel to that matter, you know, the studies that our planners have put in and, and even the developers is that it doesn't impact, and I, and I believe that myself, it's really what's going on outside of Tuckahoe. Main Street's an east-west corridor to get from Yonkers to Norrisell, to get to White Plains Road, and whatever's going on, well beyond our borders, is impacting Main Street more than any development that's happened the last fifteen or twenty years in Tuckahoe.
And not only that, you know, I always look at, when I drive home, I drive through Bronxville across Palmer Road, and you know what? That's a low underpass going underneath the railroad tracks in Bronxville, so you know darn well that a lot of trucks are coming through Tuckahoe because they're not, they can't make it through Bronxville, so, and are they going to find their way up to try and get from Yonkers part of the world over to the Norrisell part of the world by going through Scarsdale? I'm sure there's some issue there, so really, we, we kind of get stuck. I think we get stuck.
And I know that in the past, past village attorneys have looked into not allowing certain Norrisell, and, and the answer was that, you know, we would immediately be brought into a lawsuit of interfering with interstate commerce if we tried to enact anything like that, so, again, it's, it's complicated.
But, if we built a bridge right across Main Street here that was about 12 feet tall or 11 feet tall...
We've got to put that 25 million in the next budget.
Yeah, that's right, that's true, good point, so...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nick.
Yes, sir. One more, he said, okay. I got to try and make the Chamber of Commerce having their annual dinner tonight, so...
Anthony Fury, 3 Midland. The Walk Bridge, I just got a question, when that comes down eventually?
Yes.
If somebody has any old movies back in the seventies when it was going up, maybe something we could put those two together?
Yeah, we actually wanted to get Wade out there, we'll talk to him tonight.
And also the little piece of property, I'm assuming that's village property there? Maybe another little micro park going in there, maybe something for the library to use?
I think the library's getting real excited about the opportunity to extend that, uh...
Little garden they have?
Garden that they have there, yeah. So, actually, they were talking about that tonight.
Uh, one, one more thing. Wednesday, St. Anthony's Day, and the church is having the mass at 7:30 Assumption. For the overflow traffic, can they park on Pleasant Avenue?
Yes, yes.
Okay, that's it, thanks. Have a good night.
Thank you, St. Anthony, okay. All right, so, nobody else, so with there being no other business tonight, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn this meeting. And do I have a second?
So moved.
So, the meeting is now adjourned, till next time, Tuckahoe, have a very good evening.